Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order for February 6, 2024, for the City Council. Rule call and posting of the agenda.
Councilmember Basua.
Here.
Councilmember Madrigal.
Here.
Councilmember Porelo.
Here.
Councilmember Tehran.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Present.
Mayor Portman-McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted in the City Hall Bulletin Board on January 25, 2024. I also have an announcement pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 52.3. Each member of the Housing Board of Commissioners present will receive $50 pay for convening in this meeting, and they will be joining the council meeting regular session at 6 o'clock. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item is Item B, and this is comments on closed items. Do we have any speakers, virtually or in person?
Mayor, we do not have any speakers for closed session items, virtually or in person, at this time.
Thank you. So we're going to Item C, closed session, and we'll have our city attorney help us out.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council will recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 56.9, Subdivision D1, to confer with its attorneys. The matter being discussed is Flor Martinez versus City of Oxnard et al. The City Council will also recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 57.6, to review the status of labor negotiations and to review its available funds and funding priorities for the purpose of providing instructions to the city's negotiators, Assistant City Manager Human Resources Director and Chief of Police, regarding the organization specified in Item C2 of the meeting agenda. The City Council will also recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 56.8, to give instructions to its real property negotiators regarding property located at 5208 Cypress Road. The agency's negotiator is Emilio Ramirez, Housing Director, and the negotiating party is Darcy Taylor for Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you. We say attorney, so we'll be back opening ceremonies at 6 p.m., so we're going into closed session.
Good evening. We're back from a closed session. And Mr. City Attorney, any announcements out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no actions to report out of closed session this evening.
Thank you. Our next item is Item D. This is opening ceremonial items. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance. Please follow me with that. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
May the record show that Commissioner Jose Andrade has joined the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item we have, this is a ceremonial item. We have subject presentation, a proclamation designating the month of February 2024 as Black History Month. And we do have some individuals here today, and I'm going to name them, come up, and I have a proclamation for each one, and I'll read the last one. MLK Committee of Ventura County, Dr. Vincent Stewart, and committee members coming up. Then the next one is Kimberly Thomas Kelly, Chapter 5, Chapter President of Ventura County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma, blah, 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 blah. I'm not going to mention the rest. Coming up, Kimberly. Okay. And then the next one is Angela Michelle Landers, co-chair of the Juneteenth Celebration of Ventura County, coming up. And again, we have Vincent Stewart, who's going to be accepting the Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity of Ventura Alumni Chapter. And then we have the Community Advocacy Coalition, Incorporated, they're here. And then we have Dr. Martha McQueen, McLaughlin, President of the High Kappa Omega Chapter of Ventura County. Who else am I missing? Anybody else who wants to come up with it, that's okay. Okay. Let me give one proclamation. Let me see. This is for... okay. Okay. Let me give one proclamation. Let me see. This is for... Juneteenth, which is... And then we have the Community Coalition. We have Martha. Councilwoman Martha. And who else? Let me see. We need one more. Who else? Who's missing? Delta?
Animal Radiors.
Okay, this is proclamation, Black History Month, February 2024. Whereas African-Americans have a proud history and rich heritage, Black History Month gives Americans an opportunity to learn more about the contributions of African-Americans to our community and our nation. Whereas we celebrate African-Americans for their culture, political, economic, and historical contributions to our country. Where African-Americans have preserved, persevered, excuse me, despite facing daunting challenges of indignities in the result of widespread racial prejudice and institutional discrimination. Whereas African-Americans are recognized for their courage, tenacity, contribution to our country, as skilled workers, esteemed professionals, lawyers, pilots, inventors, educators, public officials, orators, publishers, physicians, ethics, small business owners, bankers, librarians, and much more to help create the status of wealth of the United States. While remembering the special role of our nation, most celebrated African-Americans also commend the everyday African-American heroes who are dedicated to long cherished ideals of family, community, and nation. Whereas the citizens are proud of their heritage and proud of the country and know the value of hard work, sacrifice, and establish in a good life, loving home, safe community, and deserve honor and recognition. Now therefore, I, John C. Zaragoza, Mayor of the City of Oxford, hereby proclaim the month of February 2024 as Black History Month. In the City of Oxford, encourage all residents to learn more about the contributions made to our community and our nation by the African-American community that is signed by the mayor on the 5th day of February. Young lady, who wants to speak first?
Thank you, Mayor Zaragoza. Thank you very much. And to the council and to all those that are in the audience, on behalf of the Community Advocacy Coalition, we thank you so much for this proclamation. And yes, we have made contributions throughout the United States, throughout the world, certainly here in Ventura County. As a lifelong resident of Ventura County, I'm happy to say that we here in the 805, we've made many contributions, and we thank you so much for recognizing us. Thank you. And I would like to say that CAC, maybe you haven't heard of the organization, but it is a social justice organization. So if anyone is interested, please see me afterwards.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for recognizing our organizations and contributions for Black History Month. I am co-chair for Juneteenth, and we have been celebrating Juneteenth for going on 33 years. So please, do come out to our event in June 15th of this year, out at Oxford Plaza Park. And we'll have some symbols and presentations of black history that should be well attended, and hopefully we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Last year, we had several thousand people at the Plaza Park. Vince?
Good evening. Thank you so much, Mr. Zaragoza, and to the council and to all those watching. My name is Kimberly Thomas Kelly, and I'm the Chapter President for the Ventura County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Our organization is 111 years old, and we've been in this community for 43 years. Our focus is on social justice, political action in our community. And although the African-American community globally and nationally has made contributions, black history is everyone's history. It's America's history. Once we can remove the novelty of it and incorporate black people into our social lives, then we can become more equal globally, nationally, and in our own communities. We need that. Even as I glance at this council, at the board, what we don't see are African-Americans who represent this community. So if there's anybody watching who might, you know, have an interest in political action, come serve. Come and serve the community and truly be representative. Thanks so much for the recognition.
And just remember, we did have Councilman Pinkert here, also, and Irene Pinkert, Mayor Proton. Councilwoman Martha?
Thank you. Dr. Martha McQueen Lejeune. I am the President of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, here serving Ventura County. We are in 12 countries, serving all over the world. Have 115,000 active members, about 350 members that have, were initiated to our chapter. And our service is to all mankind. So anywhere we can find ourselves serving, we will do that. And I'm hoping that you're seeing us around Ventura County, serving the community. One thing that I will add, that I actually shared at our Port Wendy Council meeting last night, was there is a wonderful, wonderful 41-minute video that I think everyone should watch. It's a video regarding the price that our children, African-American children, played in the civil rights movement. It's called "The Children's March." It can be found on YouTube. If you Google that, it's from 1963, Birmingham, Alabama, 41 minutes. You do not want to miss that piece of history for the United States. So like my sister said here, black history is in February. I urge you to research black history all throughout the year. There is so much to know about the benefits and the inventions and just everything that the African-Americans have paid into this country. So please, Google the video and please watch it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Doctor?
Well, I can't really say anything more. It's been well said by the members up here. But just on behalf of the MLK Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated and the Community Advocacy Coalition, just want to thank you for the honor.
Thank you so much. Put your hands together for Black American. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming by. Thank you. Thank you. Ah, okay. Ah, good. Let me see. You? Oh, the parent too? Okay. Doctor, which one? This one here? Okay, I'll get you one. Thank you so much. Okay, put your hands together again for the... Thank you so much for that. Okay, our next proclamation is Parents Leadership Month. Then we need Kathleen Van... Is she here, Kathleen? And also, we have Jackie Flores Ortega. Kathleen and Jackie coming up. I didn't want to mispronounce your last name.
That's okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Stand right here. So Kathleen, you got to accept this, okay? Thank you. Okay, this is proclamation, Parent Leadership Month, February 2024. Whereas parent leadership is an essential effective means of strengthening families and preventing child abuse and neglect. Where parent leadership is successfully achieved, where parents receive support and training, ensure responsibility, expertise, leadership in planning, implementation, oversight, and evaluation of policies, practices, and programs that affect families in the community. Where Parents Anonymous Incorporated has created National Parent Leadership Month and celebrated in February to recognize the extraordinary courage and tenacity of parents who have reached out to make improvements to their families and communities. Whereas the City of Oxford recognizes the vital importance of partnering with parents and public systems, private organizations, policymakers, and other key stakeholders to implement parent leadership strategies effectively. Whereas Ventura County Parent Voices, which is really important, has provided invaluable work in the community with a partnership for safe families and communities. Whereas Ventura County Parent Voices partners with the Coastal Tri Counties and Child Abuse Prevention Councils to bring regional alignment, and has been recognized by United Parents Interface Human Service Agency, Kids and Families Together, First Five, and MICOB. Now therefore, I, John C. Zaragoza, Mayor of the City of Oxford, hereby proclaim the month of February 24, 2024 as Parent Leadership Month in the City of Oxford, and recommend, observed by all residents, is signed by the mayor today. Young lady?
May I ask you? Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. It is with gratitude and great respect that I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Partnership for Safe Families and Communities and the Parents Voices. The Parents Voices are individuals in our community with lived experience with the services provided to families. They use their voice and their experience to influence policies and procedures so that we can come from a strength-based and family-focused perspective. We do a number of things both on the state, regional, and local level. I'd just like to share a couple of examples this evening to honor this group of individuals and their families. On a state level, we work with our Child, Youth, and Family Wellness System to create wellness throughout the state of California, going to conferences and presentations to learn from other counties and to share our experience. On a regional level, we work with our Coastal Tri Counties team, that's Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, recognizing that all the way up and down the coast, families need to be together, to be strengthened, to be unified, and to be heard. And on a local level, we have a few different events that we host on a monthly basis. We have a Strengthening Families Collaborative, where we pull together all the agencies throughout our county who provide direct services to families. We learn from one another, we share resources, but most importantly, we make sure that these services hear the voice of the families that are receiving the services, to understand how we can strengthen and how we can keep our families with the five protective factors strong. We also have our Parent Voice Team here that does something on a monthly basis called Social Connections, where they connect parents. They talk to one another, they get together, they share resources, and they lift one another. And then coming up in the month of April, on Saturday, April 6, we are having our annual 5K, and we want everyone in the City of Oxford to come and stand strong, as well as throughout the county. It will be held at the Ola Koi State Beach in Oxford, and it is led by our families, our parents, and our youth. It's called Stronger Families, Safer Kids. So we will make sure that everyone is here and to stand represented and united. Thank you so much, and it is an honor on behalf of all of these parents who are so strong and so beautiful and so dedicated to our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Put your hands together for all this. So this is really taking care of our children. It's extremely, taking care of our children is extremely important for all of us, you know. And thank you again for the parents. Moms and dads are really, really important, especially moms. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming by. Thank you. Okay, our next item is Item F. This is public comments, an item's not in the agenda. And we do have some speakers, and I'm going to be calling out the speakers. And you got three minutes, you know, to speak. And we're going to start off with William Rogers. Is William Rogers available?
Mayor Zaragoza, William is currently not available virtually or in person.
Okay, thank you. Then we have in person, I think we have Ronald Arajo, followed by Stack, Farah Stack. Ronald, Commissioner?
I apologize for the wait. I have a presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
For a PowerPoint slide.
Oh, you have a PowerPoint.
Public comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Got three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ronald Arajo, and I am speaking to you as a fellow registered Oxford voter. As someone who feels strongly about voter participation, I wanted to inform you and the public what's at stake in these upcoming county supervisory elections. As a brief overview, our voters, our votes matter because we are making our choice on a nearly $3 billion county budget, five to eight times of our city, depending on whether you include enterprise funds. I'll specifically point out the two slices of the environment and health and human services, because these are arguably in the top five local issues that we debate on every day. The county owns the vast majority of the land in this county and is easily the sole public means for mental health. I hope Oxford voters realize that while they should still hold you on city council accountable, the county has the money to push forth the policies we want. You are all aware of the district lines, but as an intro for the public, the county supervisory district split Oxford unevenly into three districts, with four of your districts split into two or even all three of the contested elections. Narrowing our focus to financial contributions, for example, individuals, committees, and PACs, you notice that individuals, people like you and me, only make up less than three out of every $5, and of that, Oxford is only half of the overall. Of just those individual contributors, our sister cities of Ventura and Camarillo making up half and one-third of Oxford population, each have twice the financial power of Oxford and combined have four times the power. I titled this presentation as Relative Influence because it's not a one-to-one relationship of money to votes and influence. I understand. Trust me, I have a little of that experience. But if money wasn't so important, why did this body pass contribution limits along with every other city in this county? If it wasn't so important, why did at least one of your memberships speak against the repeal of the county ordinance? And if it wasn't so important, why was it arguably one of the most contentious agenda items on the county board? Maybe there will be an argument that the money doesn't really move the needle so much. Fine, let's accept that premise. What this pie chart shows is the proportion of registered voters for all the municipalities within Districts 1, 3, and 5. It's obvious that Oxford holds the clear plurality. However, Ventura and Camarillo are registered in much greater numbers than Oxford relatively. And even more so, Oxford is in the middle or bottom of voter turnout. Again, our sister cities of Ventura and Camarillo outpace us. I'm asking, I'm urging, I'm demanding that you use your influence in whatever way that you can. You clearly know how to use your influence because you all got your respective seats. Half of you have a very robust social media presence. Use it. All of you have extensive networks in the community, as you all proudly proclaimed during your campaigns. Use it. I'm looking to all of you because frankly, in my opinion, Oxford is not using its influence on the county board to the best of its ability. We must, we will most... My time is up. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Farah Stack.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Farah Stack, Policy Associate, speaking on behalf of the Community Environmental Council, an environmental nonprofit whose mission is to build on-the-ground momentum to reverse the threats of the climate crisis. We work throughout Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo counties. I'm here today to ask the council to arrange an informational presentation from our regional community choice energy provider Clean Power Alliance, or CPA, to provide an opportunity for council staff and the public to learn more about CPA's Reach Code program. This program offers $12,500 in technical support to help cities adopt local building codes promoting electrification in electric vehicles. Reach codes are a tool for cities to meet their climate goals, improve energy efficiency in new construction, prepare for the future of electric vehicles, enhance affordable housing, and create healthier and more sustainable communities. The Reach Code program is an amazing opportunity for the city to accelerate its efforts in addressing the climate crisis and reducing pollution from gas appliances in homes and buildings. Once again, we are witnessing the cost of climate inaction with California's deadly storms. The climate crisis is here, and we must take bold action to eliminate our dependence on fossil fuels. As you may know, buildings are a major source of fossil fuels, accounting for roughly 25% of the state's carbon emissions. In Oxford, about 22% of the city's greenhouse gas emissions come from energy usage attributed to natural gas. come from energy usage attributed to natural gas, a potent fossil fuel, primarily used for space and water heating in residential buildings, according to the City of Oxnard's Climate Action Plan. Eliminating climate pollution out of our buildings is essential to meet both the state of California and the City of Oxnard's goals of carbon neutrality by 2045. Fossil fuel appliances not only pose risks for the climate, but also for human health. Research shows that gas cooking produces over 25 million tons of carbon pollution each year in the U.S. And recent research from Stanford University found that gas stoves leak methane and other pollutants even when the stoves are off. Gas stoves also emit pollutants like nitrogen dioxide and carbon monoxide, which are known to damage our lungs and exacerbate respiratory issues. Luckily, jurisdictions can amend their building codes to restrict the installation of natural gas in new construction to reduce pollution and improve public health. Building electrification is the most cost-effective and least risky pathway to decarbonize buildings. Failure to take this action early would result in a continuation of the installation of equipment and infrastructure that will quickly become obsolete and thus have to be replaced before its end of life, which would waste taxpayer money. As a city located in the fastest-warming county in the contiguous United States, it's essential that Oxnard takes bold action to decarbonize its buildings and leverage CPA's Reach Code program. Reach codes have been adopted by over 76 jurisdictions across California, including the County of Ventura, the City of Ojai, and the City of Santa Barbara. Please consider agendizing this informational presentation. I'm happy to email you the CPA contact. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abra Stewart. Is that, is she, are he available?
Mayor Zaragoza, Abra is available virtually.
Okay.
Abra, please press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hi. Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Abra Stewart, and I'm the Program Manager at Climate First, Replacing Oil and Gas, and I'm a longtime resident of Ventura County. I'm speaking tonight to urge the council to file and receive an informational presentation from the Clean Power Alliance about the CPA Reach Code program. I personally live in a house full of natural gas, from my heating to my stove. I am constantly inhaling pollution from these appliances. I've even had my carbon monoxide alarm go off in the middle of the night. And as a renter, I don't have the ability to change out these appliances to electric alternatives. But I do have the ability to advocate for my elected officials to get educated about reach codes and consider the positive benefits they can have on your constituents, and that is why I'm speaking tonight. I'm asking the city council to agendize an informational presentation from our community choice energy provider, the CPA, to provide an opportunity for yourselves and residents to learn more about electrification and how reach codes can be used as a tool to ensure healthier and more sustainable buildings and communities. Recreating this presentation is extremely important because it's the first step for Oxnard to set an example for the rest of Ventura County. As the largest city in the fastest-warming county in the United States, the City of Oxnard is well-positioned to set a standard that cuts natural gas infrastructure out of our homes, out of our frontline communities, and out of our bodies for improved public and planetary health. I ask you to take that first step towards a clean and just future by agendizing this presentation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ashley, uh, let me see, Ashley, uh, Gangora, Ashley?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Mrs. Gangora. I am one of the many that were affected by the storm on December 21st, 2023. My husband, myself, and my two kids were awakened to a total nightmare that night when we woke up and realized we were flooding a wall over a foot and a half of water. We lost everything from furniture, clothes, both of our cars, and many valuable items, not to mention all of the Christmas presents that we worked really hard to be able to get for our kids. All the trauma that was caused from jumping out of our kitchen window due to the water rising and getting no help from 911, sleepless nights for our little ones to this day are traumatized from the flooding. Rainy days are no longer the same for us. Due to this, we have carried a tremendous amount of stress since we basically had to start all over again from ground, from the ground up. It took the City of Oxnard two long weeks until we got any type of acknowledgement. All we have received was a couple nights in the hotel and another few nights from sponsorship, which was with United Way. The lack of help from the city has left our family living out of boxes in my mother-in-law's small living room to this day. We have found, we have been told by, via email, that there is no funds to help, which we find that's very hard to believe. It was publicly announced that the city has been approved for help for those affected, but has failed to give it. There are many hard-working taxpayers in the city, like myself, and yet there is no funds when we need the help. There has been an SBA loan offered, but a lot of people, like myself, are getting declined, emails and emails, and still no response. Besides, a response we received by Mr. McDonald, which he stated that there is no help available for us due to no money. Ignoring us is not the answer. Answers are what we need. Help is what your citizens need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk Liz Lamar, do we?
Mayor Zaragoza, Liz is not available virtually or in person.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Ray Platell. Ray?
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember, City Staff. Years ago, when employed by the Navy, I answered to my branch head, division head, or even the department head. All in all, I worked for the federal government. But above all, I worked for every taxpayer in this room. I owed every taxpayer my best, worked to the best of my ability. Likewise, the city employees in this room tonight, and those not present, answered to the leads and department heads, and in essence, the city manager. But in reality, who do you really work for? The taxpayers of the City of Oxnard, that's who, regardless of your job title. The taxpayers of Oxnard pay your salaries, put food on your table, and roof over your heads. You actually work for Oxnard taxpayers. Learn to accept that. Therefore, when I, as a taxpayer, make a simple request to the CFO and Assistant Treasurer to meet with me to describe how investment interest is earned and what basis it is earned, I think that I deserve, as a taxpayer, an audience for my questions. All I'm asking for is some clarification relative to how these things are done. But city staff, including the CFO and Assistant Treasurer, have not responded to my request for a meeting. I even asked the city manager, but also received no response. This is so rude not to respond at all. Not only is it rude, it is ultimately unprofessional. Remember who you work for. Are you hiding behind an email where I urge the city to do something about slick and dangerous conditions on our city sidewalks? If so, this is a very shallow excuse. I was trying to help the city reduce exposure to potential litigation. Or, does the city have something to hide? Are you afraid that I may again uncover something, let's call them miscalculations by city staff? If not, why don't you meet with me? Let's always talk about transparency when you hide. Transparency, transparency means nothing if the local government doesn't share with a taxpayer how things are done. We, the taxpayers, deserve to know how and why the city does what it does. Therefore, schedule a meeting, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Connet. Joe?
Good evening. I'm Joe Connet. I'm a registered civil engineer and retired deputy public works officer for the Navy. I lived in Oxnard for 12 years, volunteer each break, doing field distribution to Oxnard residents at the All Saints Episcopal Church, just a couple blocks away. And my sister-in-law and brother-in-law live in Oxnard. I'm here speaking for the Sierra Club. I'm here to ask the council to reach out to the Clean Power Alliance and request that they provide an informational presentation about the Reach Code Program at an upcoming city council meeting. The Clean Power Alliance, CPA, is our regional community choice energy provider. Since 2019, CPA has provided 100% clean energy to the City of Oxnard. The presentation will provide an educational opportunity for council, staff, and members of the community to learn more about building electrification and how reach codes are a tool for creating healthier, greener, and more sustainable communities. I've seen the benefits personally from switching from gas cooking and heating to electricity in my own home. As an engineer, I know how valuable well-written building codes are for the design and construction of safe and affordable homes and buildings. If the presentation results in Oxnard adopting reach codes as outlined in the City of Oxnard's Climate Action and Adoption Plan, there is an option, opportunity for the city to collaborate with CPA and benefit from the Reach Code Program. It provides, the Reach Code Program, it provides for electrification of buildings. This program presents a great opportunity for the city to receive $12,500 in technical assistance for the development of a building electrification and/or EV charging reach code. By implementing effective electrification reach codes, Oxnard can reduce the cost of new construction, save energy, eliminate future retrofit costs, and make progress toward mitigating climate change. With improved indoor air quality and by eliminating the natural gas combustion fire risk, all electric buildings are safer and healthier to live in, along with being cost-effective, especially when adopted at the new construction stage. Electrifying our homes has meter health benefits. Burning gas in stoves and furnaces releases nitrogen oxides and particulates, which can have serious health consequences. I encourage you to request a reach code presentation to start the process of looking into building electrification and/or EV charging reach codes for Oxnard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Martha Polanco?
Buenas tardes.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Martha Polanco.
My name is Martha Polanco. I, I live on 1931 Brookside. At the Marina Vista Complex. On the December 21st of 2023, we suffered a flooding. We woke up at 2:00 a.m. with water. And since that day, we suffer from stress. We lost furniture, everything in our home. Nobody showed up to provide us with any help, with except the Red Cross to take down our information, but that's it. So 12 days later, the city showed up. Yeah, to put a yell, yell tag. So that we couldn't be there any longer. So since that day, we've, you know, been homeless. So they helped us, providing us with 10 days at a hotel, but we haven't received anything after that. We've talked to all the departments requesting help for us and our families, but they keep telling us that there are no resources, that there's nothing there. That's why I'm here, asking you to please not forget about us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and also, by the way, just for information, that our city manager's going to give us a severe storm update in a while, too, just for information. Our next speaker is Reyes, Mrs. Reyes. Reyes? Good evening, Mayor. My name is Emiglia Reyes. I come here representing my family, my husband, and my two children. Thursday, December 21st, because of the rains, our apartment flooded. I'm sorry. We lost our home, our vehicles. I'm sorry for my tears. It's really hard for me to remember. It causes me pain, seeing my children lose in their home. I'm here to see if there's any way you can help us. Because it's not just my family, but also my neighbor's family. We're all in the same situation. The city, you know, closed our homes at night. We cannot sleep there anymore. We can only be at our apartment during the day with just the very basic necessities. My children ask me every day, when are we going to go back to normal? That is why. I know it's, this is, humans are not responsible for this. It was the rain, a storm. But I believe that it's in hands of other human people for you to be able to help us, not only my family, but also to all those other impacted by this. I'm really sorry that I was overtaken by emotions here this evening. Thank you very much. Thank you for, for your testimonies, what I mentioned. Vanessa Teran. Vanessa?
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, and council members. I'm Vanessa Teran, Policy Director with the Misteco Indigenous Community Organizing Project. I've spoken here before. Today, I'm here to urge the council to agendize an informational presentation from Clean Power Alliance about the CPA Reach Code. As you know, MYCOP is the only organization dedicated entirely to addressing the needs of the indigenous community in the California Central Coast. And as you've seen in the last three days and at the end of December during the thunderstorm, where two inches of rain fell in Oxnard, in the City of Oxnard, in Port Winemee, that is known as a once-in-a-millennium circumstance or phenomenon by meteorologists, it's indicating to us that clearly these circumstances are continually bound to happen. And our indigenous communities and our low-income communities, clearly, as you're hearing from some community members today, will be most affected by severe impacts of climate change. So now is the time that we plan and respond to ensure that our homes, the future of our homes are protected with adapted infrastructure, resilient infrastructure. For this reason, and more importantly, for the general health and well-being of our communities, I want to make sure that it's available, that our communities understand that there's a future, a better future for our buildings and our homes. And that's through the electrification due to our reach codes. So as a city that is near the coastline and one of the most vulnerable coastlines, I will ask you to actively work to adopt an all-electric reach code for new construction that includes commercial development, not just residential. As you know, and as you heard today, we're the fastest-warming county in the nation. And we will continue to be that if we don't start to create steps that advance a just transition. So I ask you to take any incentive and any opportunity to make the right choice to continue to build a better, brighter, future Oxnard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Maria Navarro?
Hello. Good evening, council members, staff. My name is Maria Navarro, and I am here as a senior policy advocate of cause. Today, I stand before you to urge the city council to take action in fostering a sustainable and resilient future for our community. And to do so, I specifically here, I'm here to request that the city council invite a presentation from the Clean Power Alliance regarding the CPA Reach Code program. A little bit of info on this, the CPA Reach Code program represents a critical steps towards achieving our climate goals and ensuring the resilience of our city. By implementing more- By implementing more stringent building energy codes, we have the opportunity to significantly reduce our carbon footprint and mitigate the impacts of climate change. The CPA Reach Code program provides valuable resources and guidance for local governments like ours to adopt forward-thinking policies that promote energy efficiency and sustainability in building construction. Moreover, as we continue to witness the escalating effects of climate change, it is imperative that we prioritize resilience in all aspects of city planning and development. This includes not only bolstering our infrastructure against extreme weather events, but also constructing new housing with materials that are climate resilient and resistant. By incorporating climate resilient design principles into our building standards, we can better protect our residents and mitigate the risks associated with climate-related hazards. I urge the city council to recognize the urgency of this matter and take proactive steps to address it. By requesting a presentation from the CPA, we can gain valuable insights and guidance on how to effectively integrate the CPA Reach Code program into our local policies and regulation. I also want to just highlight the comments also that were made before from tenants who are here, from the people who are being displaced as well. I know it's hard, maybe in your position, to sometimes find how to help, but I really would urge you to also look at, look out for these people who are here, and if there's anything our organization has caused, we could do, please connect with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other speakers on this item, virtually or in person?
Mayor Zergosa, there's no additional speakers virtually or in person.
Thank you. Our next item then is Item G. This is a report of the city manager. G1, City Managers. Subject to severe storm emergency action, recommendation the city council ratify the director orders regarding the severe storms, local emergency proclaimed by Direct Emergency Service on December 27, 2023, and related accident taken pursuant to the severe storm local emergency. And Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to start by inviting Mr. George Costerco from the Small Business Administration Office. I believe he's online. Madam Clerk, if we could have him come, he's going to give an update, the work that they've done here in our community. George?
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, do they need translators? Two seconds. Do we need the translators? Senor is going to, next to them or what?
They can translate.
Because they're the translators, why he can probably sit next to you, next to you folks. Sit over here, and that way you can, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. He can translate right next to him. Thank you. Go ahead. Okay, Alex.
George, there you are. Can you go ahead, George?
Sure. I can speak slowly if there's going to be translations. And I, just before I start, I did hear some very compelling testimony by folks that suffered greatly during this event. And if anybody has been denied, got a denial letter, I encourage you to go into Disaster Loan Center over there at the library and bring your letter and talk with our customer service staff. We are here to help, and if there's any issues or barriers, we certainly want to help with those. So let me kind of give you guys an overview here. I do have a slide presentation. If you'd like to run it, you don't have to. I can just speak. But, so, good evening, Honorable City of Oxnard Mayor and City Council Members in public. My name is George Costerco. I am with the U.S. Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. I'm here to provide an overview of the loan resources that are available to assist the residents of Ventura County impacted by the December 2023 stormy flood and disaster. You can switch the slide to the next one. So SBA did receive an administrative disaster declaration request on January 8th from the California Office of Emergency Services for damages to businesses and homes that resulted from flooding that occurred December 21 to 23 of last year. Ventura County didn't meet the damage criteria for an SBA administrative declaration following a survey. Our administrator issued that declaration on January 10th. So unlike what the name indicates, SBA offers low-interest loans to businesses of all sizes, nonprofits, homeowners, and renters, not covered by insurance or other recovery funds. At this point, I do want to acknowledge the efforts of Ventura County Sheriff's Department Office of Emergency Services and the communities of Port Winnebago and City of Oxnard. You guys really, I know there was a lot of frustration by residents, but the coordination of the county and the city, the cities during this first response period was really actually considerable, and it was very overwhelming, as your emergency services individual had mentioned in earlier testimony, over 640 vehicles suffered considerable damage and likely will all need replacements. So there's, this has impacted this community greatly. So I'd like to just share a little information on what SBA has to offer. We can go to the next slide. So SBA disaster loans are available for homeowners for up to $500,000 to replace or repair their primary residence. Renters and homeowners can apply for up to $100,000 in coverage to replace or repair personal property. And businesses and nonprofit organizations can apply for up to $2 million in loans to cover disaster losses not fully covered by insurance. Businesses also would, could apply for up to $2 million to help meet financial obligations and operating expenses that could have been met had the disaster not occurred. We can move to the next slide. Thank you. Ventura is one of four eligible California counties that can apply for funding here. Those counties include Ventura, Kern, Los Angeles, and Santa Barbara. Next slide, please. SBA offers low fixed interest rates with terms of up to 30 years to help in recovery. There's no cost to apply and no obligation to accept the loan if approved. The December 2023 storm and flooding disaster loan rates are as low as 2.688% for the homeowner loans, 4%, and this includes renters, low as 4% for businesses, and as low as 3.25% for nonprofit organizations. Eligibility is based on a case-by-case review for each applicant. There is no interest for the first year and no repayment requirement for the first 12 months. SBA disaster loans have no closing costs and no prepayment penalties. I do want to encourage folks that have suffered a loss to definitely come and visit the center. The deadline to apply for physical damage is March 11, 2024. I did mention for businesses, this is something called an Economic Injury Disaster Loan. That's, that's basically for working capital loans to help businesses meet their ordinary and necessary financial obligations that cannot be met as a direct result of the disaster. Loan rates for that are as low as 4% for businesses and 3.25% for nonprofit organizations, and also typically our 30-year loans, shorter terms are available. This one has a later deadline, and that one is, it's important that, that folks apply for that one by October 10th. If we could go to the next slide. So since January 13th, we have had a disaster loan outreach center at the South Oxnard Branch Library at 4300 Savior's Road. After our first weekend, the hours of operation were expanded to 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. We are closed on Fridays. Typically, our customer service staff will call out to folks that have, we've been notified by the cities and the emergency services that there is a need, but we have not met with them yet, they have not come in. Or we may have folks that have started a loan and maybe they're at a point where there's a request for documents or other items, and we haven't heard from them, we'd like to move the loans along. For the next slide. I mentioned earlier the efforts by the cities and the county to get the word out. As I said, on Saturday, the opening day of our disaster loan outreach center, this is Saturday, January 13th, we had more than 100 people arrive for assistance. In fact, that was fairly overwhelming. We did not expect that. I don't think anybody did, but clearly there was community need. So as a result of that, some people just had to leave for work because, you know, they couldn't wait. However, they did learn that we could, they could register and enroll online. So our field operations staff did help 71 people that day. That's probably the largest group in recent memory. Getting people enrolled, the process started. I wanted to share the latest information with you folks here, as of this morning. I want to let you know that we have received a total of 568 applications. Of that number, 228 are in progress. Now, I'm combining home, business, and economic injury numbers, but I'm just letting you know. That's where we're at. And so out of that, we have had 14 loans have been approved to be funded, and it's close to $300,000 so far. And like I said, we've got applications that are in progress. So we really ask that if there are those in the community with needs and they haven't been able to come in yet, please come into the Oxnard Library. We also, of course, have the portal there. People can actually, on that address there, they can actually apply online to make an appointment and get the process started, and that can speed things. So lastly, let's change the slide, one more slide. We can be a primary source of federal assistance to help private property owners, whether it's personal property or real estate, pay for disaster losses that were not covered by any kind of insurance. And then let's go to the next slide. We have more information. Where additional places, if you choose not to come into the disaster loan outreach center at the library, you can apply online, and there's a number. And then finally, just to close with the last slide, disasters such as the storm and flooding in December 21 through 23 can severely impact businesses, homeowners, and renters. And as we've seen in the community with the need, people coming in, and the testimony today, that can really have devastating consequences on the community. So I would be glad to answer any questions folks might have. I suspect there is some, and I'd be glad to answer them.
George, Mayor Zergosa, thank you so much for coming to Oxnard the other day, over to the South Oxnard Center. The question I have is, I know we had a lot of people today that were renters, so they have the opportunity to apply for the $100,000 disaster SBA loan. The other question I have is, is this all information in Spanish?
Yes, absolutely. We have people there that can speak Spanish. We can also, I want to assure folks that we have an ability to get a third party on a phone line to help with any, any other dialects or languages that we may not have at the center.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any additional council members, any questions? George?
Excuse me, Mayor Zergosa?
We have any speakers on this item?
No, we do not have any speakers on this item, but just for the record, Councilwoman Basu, join the meeting at 7:10 PM.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Teran?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much, George, for the information this evening. And you may be able to speak to this, or perhaps our city manager can as well, but as was mentioned in this presentation, this isn't just a business, a small business loan. This is something that homeowners and renters and property managers, I'd imagine, could all apply for. And I would imagine the initial response would be, I need help. I can't take out a loan. Why would I take out a loan to do this? With the terms being 15- to 30-year loans, but also there being no interest and no payments required for the first 12 months, as well as no penalty for prepaying it, I just had this conversation with my grandfather, whose house was also flooded. You know, he was telling me that he was planning to put a driveway in for accessibility for he and my grandmother, so they didn't have to jockey for parking and didn't have to worry about getting out of the car at the curb. And he said, you know, I don't, if I have to choose to fix my walls and my drywall or mold and put the driveway in, I can't do both. And I mentioned this, as was highly recommended by our neighbors who've already applied, saying, you know, you can at least get on the list, just apply for it, because if it's approved, you don't have to spend your money right now to get those repairs made, especially if we're going to mitigate mold or do repairs that are necessary because of the flooding. And I hope folks look at it from that frame, that why dip into savings if you even have those to get these repairs? If you qualify for these loans, get the loans, get the repairs done, and in the interim 12 months, we don't know what can happen. Perhaps the state or the federal government will come through, and that can be used to pay off the loan with no prepayment penalty. Or perhaps it's something that we work on in our own budgets. Or if you're a renter, your landlord applies to make these repairs to your home or your apartment or an entire apartment complex. And so I just hope everybody understands, if you were affected by this directly, that at least look into this as the first option that's here available to get work going and get things moving for folks. And if you, if you're a renter and your landlord is trying to figure out what they're going to do, take them, handhold them over to the South Oxnard Center to go apply for this, because there's absolutely funding for them to apply for, to get this done, to get folks back to normal and back into their homes. So that's, my comments are, Mayor. And thank you again, George.
Any additional comments?
No, I just want to see if George has anything.
George, anything else that you might want to share with us?
Yeah, I want to just thank the council member for his really, you know, really great analysis of what this, what these loans can offer folks. You know, the interest rates are extremely low, the fact that there's no prepayment penalty, and the fact that, that there's no interest or payment due in the first year is considerable. This administration has made some pretty dramatic changes to the loan program in the last year or so. The limits have gone up dramatically. They were at $200,000 for home loans and $40,000 for renters for decades, and they've recently been increased. Every effort is really made to keep the rates as low as possible. They are reviewed and changed on a quarterly basis, but when a declaration like this is declared, these do not change during the time. And also want to let folks know that if they have been denied for whatever reason, you have six months for reconsideration.
That's good.
And that is why we encourage people, please, if you feel like you've got to know, that may not be the final answer, and that's why we have the staff in your community.
And George, George, that's a good question, because I've had, I mean, a good answer or information, because I've had people that apply that didn't qualify, that potentially could go back within six months and try again.
Absolutely. So, you know, we, you've seen some numbers here. We said we've had 568, you know, that have, that have started the process, and then we have another number, which are the ones in process. Let me look at my notes really quick, if you'll just hold for just a second.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, so we, of that, 568, 228 are in progress. And I had a conversation with your city manager a couple weeks ago about this. So there's, you know, you look at the number, the gap between that number, and in some cases, that might be some people that have been denied, but also, it can also be voluntary application withdrawals as well as suspended loans. And when we say suspended loans, we don't mean that we're suspending your loan. There is a process where we document everything, it's very transparent. And if there's been a request for something and we don't hear from the individual, let's say we're asking for a bank record or asking him to sign the tax form, those kinds of things, things that are just normally the part of the loan process, it is, it automatically goes into suspense. It doesn't go away, it's not withdrawn. Those are also eligible for the six-month, not recovery, but review or reconsideration. They don't go away, they stay in the system. So that's why, while we have these folks here at the library, they can either, you know, people that have a letter in hand, use as to what the next steps, because they feel like they haven't heard anything, please come in. It's really, really great that we've got the folks here. We want to help. I mean, basically, you know, we, we are, we have a dual responsibility to not only offer the disaster loans, but as a cash flow lender, we have to establish the willingness and ability to repay a loan. So all those requested documents are very critical, that people, I'm not suggesting if people aren't following through on purpose, they may be not clear that that's, that they do need to keep giving us information or requesting it so we can continue the process. So I just wanted to just clarify for that, folks. So basically, then the transparency. So basically, then the transparency, really, I mean, because we do have oversight bodies that review our loan program. We not only have to document why we're making a loan, but we also must document why we haven't moved forward with the loan request. And that is, you know, obviously confidential between the applicant and our loan officers, but at the same time, it is there, you know, if there was ever an audit. So we definitely, you know, really want to make sure that we give everybody the best chance possible, if they need that loan, to be eligible for it, if everything's in order.
Thank you, George. We have a councilman, Bert Parello, but I want to share something that you said. I've had calls and I've had emails where individuals have accused the city and the city council and not doing anything to help them out. But with that information you gave tonight, there's a lot of opportunity for renters, for landlords, for businesses to apply for that, the disaster program from the SBA program. We do have a councilman, Bert Parello.
Sir, thank you very much for coming and making the presentation. Very informative, not just for this councilman, but I'm sure for the members of the public. I also want to thank you for making the statement, willingness to repay the loan. These are not forgivable loans, am I correct?
That is correct.
And you had mentioned that there have been loans approved, I think it was the number of loans and the amount. Was it the amount total or the amount per loan?
No, 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 it's the amount total. So based on whatever the need was, whatever the, I mean, you know, this is just a cumulative number here. And I'm trying to, like I said, be as transparent with you, with your community as possible. So we've had, 14 loans have been approved. And what has it been, about three weeks since we've been here? And of that number, it's almost 300,000 total, not 300,000 each. So, yeah, it's a total of $300,000.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you very much for coming and making the presentation.
Thank you, George. Councilmembers, thank you so much. And George, thank you again.
Excuse me, Mayor Zergosa.
Any additional speakers?
There's one virtual speaker.
Okay, let's go ahead with the virtual speaker.
Speaker with phone number ending in 6377, please press star six to unmute and introduce yourself if you like, and you have three minutes.
Hello, this is Manuel Herrera, I'm one of the citizens for Better Oxnard. I'm, you know, I'm here at home watching the meeting. And one thing that no one is mentioning, and I think that's what's causing a lot of the problems here, is that a lot of people don't know how this all works. In other words, people think that, you know, this happened to them, there was flooding, and hey, I live in the city of Oxnard, the city of Oxnard needs to help me, why do I need to get a loan? You know, why can't you just help me? And I think a lot of it is because no one has explained it to them, or at least publicly, how this works. That when it's a natural disaster, you know, there's different steps that are required, that, you know, it's got to be labeled as a natural disaster, it's got to go through the Red Cross, the governor has to get involved, that's where these loans come in and everything. So in other words, it's like, it's not the responsibility of the city to pay for the damages and so forth, you know. So a lot of people don't know that. So they're wondering, why do I have to get a loan? Why isn't the city helping me? Well, can someone explain to them in simple terms why you can't? It's not that you don't want to, it's that you can't, and there's different steps and so forth. So if either the mayor, the city manager, or George, or someone can explain to them in simple terms how this works and why you can't just give them money and fix it for them. So that's just my two cents worth, so thank you.
Yeah, and Manuel, that's why we've been holding those meetings, you know, different meetings with the individuals in Spanish and in English. But I'm sure that if you call their city manager's office or my office, we give you, give those people the information. And in fact, Mr. City Manager, we probably put the information on our city website, which I think would be important and also for the people to understand, in Spanish and English. It's a good point, Manny.
Just before I continue, I want to see if George has any closing comments. And George, thank you for taking the time to be here.
I just, I'm grateful that you guys have allowed me to be here, and I'm sorry I can't be there in person. As you can imagine, there's been a lot going on in the last couple of weeks, not just in your beautiful community, but in other communities. And so I was moved to another area to start things and then, you know. So that's why I'm not available to be there in person, or I would have been. But the bottom line really is this, is that while a loan is not a first choice, it is an option. And the interest rates are very, very low. And I can understand, you know, this goes to what Manny, I think, hinted to. And I had this conversation with Patrick Maynard, your emergency services individual for Ventura County. So last year, remember, we had some pretty bad storms. And, you know, I don't want to get into the weeds with people, but that was a presidential declaration, and FEMA was involved. FEMA does offer forgivable loans and grants. And so some folks out there may have received some funding to replace a car, those kinds of things. This was what's called an administrative declaration. And so based on the damage, the threshold was easily met for SBA to help. But unlike FEMA, we are offering, you know, we're offering, you know, loans that have to be paid back to the U.S. Treasury. So, yeah, that's, and it's a little different. And I know it's a little uncomfortable for people if, because they may not see a difference between what happened, you know, a year ago, January, right? You know, and this time. But there are some subtle differences. And it really comes down to the number of structures that are impacted. That's kind of the threshold that the different agencies look at. So hopefully that sheds some light on that. So those are my closing comments. But my closing comment is, please, if anybody has questions, please come to the center. Basically, our center remains open as long as there's community need. But if we go a week and we don't get much in the way of visitors, you know, then we've got to really look at our resources. And it doesn't mean that people can't call the 800 number or get online and get help, but having that face-to-face help makes a big difference. And that's why I just want to go back to that first day, the fact that we had 71 people that signed up, that got into the system with their applications. And that's phenomenal. And that speaks to the fact that people are interested. And so if you do have neighbors, like the council mentioned, council member mentioned, that are going through the process now, they may be good people to chat with to find out what their experiences might have been.
Thank you, George, and thank you so much for your information. Appreciate it.
Mayor Zergosa.
Yes, ma'am.
We have one more virtual speaker on this item.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Caller with phone number ending in 9442, please press star six to unmute and introduce yourself if you like.
Hello? Hello?
We can hear you now, go ahead.
This is Deirdre Frank. As you know, I'm an attorney. I deal with personal injury and property damage claims. You people need to let the people know the truth. God, they have to go to a meeting at the library? They have to go to a city website? Let them know that unless they have flood insurance, they have nothing. Homeowners' insurance does not cover flood. It doesn't cover mud flow, it doesn't cover mud debris. Let them know. Let them know that unless they're, if they're a renter and if they don't have renters' insurance that covers these kinds of losses, they have nothing. Let them know that these programs that you're talking about are loans. They're not going to put them in housing, temporary or otherwise. They're not going to pay them for the loss of their belongings. They're not going to pay them for the loss of their cars. They're not going to pay them for anything. Let them know, it's a sad truth, but they need to know. Otherwise, they keep, these poor people keep searching. They keep searching for money to help them. Let them know that the city is under no obligation to pay them anything. Tell the truth here. Instead of guiding them to this website, this phone number, this location, where they're dragging themselves to get information, get a coverage attorney to get online or to get on your TV show and tell them what they have and have not as far as coverage and benefits. You know, I'm sitting here watching this, what a waste of time. And I feel so sorry for these people. You know, floods are an act of God. Acts of God, as you should know, are excluded from all insurance coverage. All insurance coverage. Let the people know. Instead of holding out a carrot for them to go searching for something that can help them. Pathetic. Thank you very much. Please help them.
Thank you for the information. Any additional speakers?
Mayor Zergosa, there's no additional speakers.
Okay, okay. Mr. City Manager?
I'll pick it up from here. So we actually don't have a director's order to ratify tonight, although we may at the next meeting. So with regard to the December storm, a couple of things I want to highlight. First of all, we do our best to understand and appreciate the severity of the impact to the families that were flooded. Couple of things I want to review. In terms of what the city was able, is able to do, we did provide assistance with cleaning out many of the damaged items. We did provide initially several nights for temporary hotel stays. We did send code inspectors to make sure that the properties, especially the rental units, were habitable. I understand in one case, we did have to yellow tag several of the units. And we are, we have been and continue to work with that property owner to get the property rehabbed as soon as possible to make it habitable. Now, you did hear from George at the SBA the distinction between the floods last year and this year, and why FEMA kicked in last year and not this year. And as a reminder, in the storm a year ago, actually, people died in that storm in some communities north of us. And then in the storm this past weekend, which fortunately for us blew over us pretty quickly, last I heard, three people had passed away. I think, I believe mostly from falling trees. We don't, I don't know yet if FEMA will kick in. But because the December storm in Oxnard, while it was devastating for some of our families, it wasn't large enough on the scale of FEMA for FEMA assistance to come. So, and as this recent speaker put pretty bluntly, the city itself is not a replacement insurance pool for our residents. As much as we wish we could do more to help, that's, it's not our actual role. That's why we have SBA and FEMA. So, but we continue to seek assistance. So a couple of things. Many weeks ago, we asked the Ventura Community Foundation if they would raise funds for our residents. And they committed to doing so, and they have indeed raised a small amount of funding. And I have to let them announce the program since it's their fundraising, but my understanding is that we'll be able to provide, I think it's going to be $1,000 for each family that was impacted by the flood. And that's thanks to the Ventura County Community Foundation and the leadership of their director, Vanessa Bechtel. Hopefully, we can announce that program with them early next week at the latest. Also, Congresswoman Julia Brownlee came to visit us at the SBA Center at the South Oxnard Library a couple of weeks ago. And she informed us, and I know this is no solace for the residents who've been impacted thus far, but she did tell us she will be introducing a bill in Congress to update the regulations of FEMA so that a storm like what hit Oxnard would trigger FEMA's assistance. So hopefully, that will work out. But we're very appreciative of her attention and care to our community and taking that effort on. So that's where we are right now. I know not everyone is going to qualify for the SBA loans, but if you at least try and you get that initial rejection, you do have up to six months to ask for reconsideration. And if you want help to pursue that consideration, contact us and we will do everything we can to help you get through the SBA bureaucracy, because it is complex, even though their staff have been very good at working with residents. So hopefully, by early next week, we will get an announcement with the Community Foundation out for the residents of Oxnard and Port Winingy, and perhaps even a few residents in the city of Ventura who may have been impacted. And that's all I have for the storm update, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parello, any additional questions?
Yes, I would like to thank the city manager for his recent comments, but I'd also like to thank the city staff for putting this portion of the meeting together. I don't know if any other communities have had the representatives from the Small Business Association show up, but my kudos to the city of Oxnard staff.
Councilmember Tehran?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that update to the city manager. I'm looking back at our staff report from our January 16th city council meeting, where we ratified a number of items on a resolution under this agenda item. And one of them was waiving fees for damaged or lost solid waste containers that floated away or were carried away by the flooding or the storm. Second was payment or relocation benefits for individuals displaced by severe flooding, which we heard about a little bit tonight. The other was suspending street sweeping citations for vehicles rendered inoperable due to severe flooding. One that is not on here, but was a previous one, was regarding permitting fees for those who are doing repairs. And I believe that we had a timeline attached to that, correct, on when, how long that would be in place, those, the deferral of those fees or those charges? Do you remember if, I think it was February 12th, is that correct? Yes, he's nodding his head, yes. Would we be able to put messaging out to folks to remind them that that would be sunsetting, unless it were reratified? But also, for like the solid waste containers, I hope anyone who's listening to this, or someone who can share it with their neighbors, if they still have not located that and it was a direct effect of the storm, please get in contact with our environmental resources folks so you can get that replaced while this is still in play, the waiving of those fees. Same with the permitting for work, and then the same for inoperable vehicles due to flooding. Make sure that if you found an alternative location, whether it be a driveway or a repair shop, or whatever the case may be, that those vehicles are able to be moved before this expires.
And by understanding, Mr. City Manager, that the ERs already replaced most of those containers, according to the emails I received? Just for information.
Yes.
Okay, any additional information?
Well, on that topic, no, I have one other topic. But that's a different, I want to see if there's other comments.
Do we need a motion on this item? No? Okay, thank you. So go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
Okay. See how we can transition this. Totally different topic now. So in the back of the council chambers, every, the audience is right. My left up here, there is a new mural on our wall, so we're going to invite Julie Estrada from our Recreation and Cultural Services Department to come and share with everyone that special project.
Welcome, Julie.
Good evening. There should be a presentation with this.
Get closer to this mic, me. Okay, thank you.
Diego?
Diego? Do you have a presentation?
Diego, do you have the presentation? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. I'm Julia Estrada with the Culture and Community Services Department, and I manage our cultural arts programs. I'm here today to introduce the new addition to council chambers for the month of February. On January 14th and 15th, youth participated in the Second Annual MLK Community Weekend, presented by the Gathering for Justice and held at the Oxnard Police Activities League Gymnasium. This event is dedicated to empowering youth and furthering the teachings of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The Culture Arts Division's programs are dedicated to the message that art is for everyone, and has created avenues where young people can create art, especially murals, despite their artistic ability. This can be seen just across the street, where the mini murals program every year adds to the collection of murals transforming the downtown parking structure. It is because of this work that the Culture Arts Staff was asked to design a visual representation of the Six Principles of Kingian Nonviolence, in which the youth can actively participate in its creation. This year, over 125 youth participated in completing this mural, from both this event and our, and the Oxnard Arts Academy. The concept of the mural's design is displaying a visual echo of the Six Kingian Principles of Nonviolence. The image of Dr. King during his "I Have a Dream" speech was incorporated into the design with the replacement of his suit with clothing compiled of various designs representing many cultures, showing that Dr. King's message of peace is for everyone. Some of the cultures represented in the designs of the coat include Native American, African, and Asian. I would like to take a moment to recognize Diana Reyes, our Recreation Coordinator, who's here today. She is assigned to art for us and has designed the artwork and led the youth in completing this project. She was assisted by Tess Zuffalo, our Recreation Aid, who is assigned to arts. And I would also like to mention members of our City Core Team, Peter Rosales and Eddie Dominguez, who quickly came together and constructed the frame and framed the actual canvas for us, as well as our Facilities Team, who was able to get it hung in time for today's In addition to the mural that is hanging here in chambers, we have displayed a collage piece in the west lobby that was put together by the Oxnard Arts Academy South Winds Class. Each student designed a section of the piece, and the image when put together is of Dr. King. The Arts Academy students also created the doves surrounding that image to support the message of peace and unity. The Oxnard Arts Academy is a youth program that builds creative spaces for youth to freely express themselves. The Visual Arts Class, who participated in both of these projects, provides formal instruction to elementary-age youth. Students learn to use various art tools and materials to become confident with a wide variety of art media and techniques. They learn basic art vocabulary, including the elements of art. They generate and express ideas independently and as collaborators. They learn to recognize and use all stages of the creative process, gain awareness of the role of arts throughout history and cultures. And most importantly, students develop confidence and experience joy through their creative expression. The Culture and Community Services Department is excited to be able to contribute to the celebration of Black History Month and showcase this work that has been created by the community for the community, and show that art is not just for the few, but truly is for everyone. Thank you for your time tonight and for continuing to support the Culture Arts Programs here in Oxnard.
Thank you so much. It's beautiful, and I really, it's fantastic, you know, that we're doing that for our children and our families here in Oxnard. And this image of Dr. Martin Luther King is really fantastic. And I want to thank the Oxnard Academy, you know, for the good work that you do, and Teron, for your staff, you know, you always do good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, anything else? Okay, thank you, Julie. Okay, our next item is Item H, and this is a time for the City Council members to make a brief presentation of their activities, and also if they'd like to place any items in the agenda. In three minutes, because we're really running behind, we'll start off with Mr. Turan. Three minutes.
Three minutes, yes, thank you. Real quickly, I attended the Carriage Square Neighborhood Council meeting last week, and it was our first meeting of 2024, and it was a good meeting. They had a fair turnout, even though it was pouring rain and very cold. I do want to announce that the Chair Len Schulman made it publicly known at that meeting that he would not be seeking a reelection for that chair when it comes up this summer, and that's after two and a half decades almost of serving as the Chair for that neighborhood. And he is inviting residents who live in the Carriage Square Neighborhood, which is the neighborhood around Eastwood Park and Curran School. If you would like to find out about becoming a Chair or part of the Executive Board, he would love to help with that recruitment to replace him in the coming election for that. So stay tuned for that, and you can reach out if you have any questions. Second is River Park Neighborhood Council will be meeting tomorrow, February 7th, at 6:00 PM at Rio Vista School, and they'll be meeting in the library, I believe. And lastly, just regarding the requests that were made tonight, I would like to check with staff about the potential for an appointment item in the future for the CPA REACH codes. And we'll, I see, I had not said, so we will follow up on that, so, all right. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Consul Madrigal?
Real quickly, next Thursday, Rio Lindo Neighborhood Meeting, I mean, Rio Lindo Neighborhood is meeting at 7:00 PM at Rio Lindo School. And then, I believe it might be tomorrow, it is tomorrow, that the Rose Park Neighborhood is having their meeting at Rose Avenue School, which, if I'm not mistaken, it might be one of their last meetings at the old site, so.
Thank you. Consul Masuwa?
I've got no comments, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week was my Ventura County Transportation Commission meeting. We talked about upcoming projects for the 101 corridor. Tomorrow is Gold Coast Transportation, the bus service locally. And one of the items of discussion at both of them, because they interrelate, is we've had another subsidence on the Los San Rail Corridor in San Clemente, and we've once again lost use of the, of the rail tracks. If you've never ridden the train from Oxnard down to San Diego, it's a wonderful ride. It's even better when the tracks are operable all the way down, so you don't have to jump onto a bus mid-trip, but we're hoping to get back up and running pretty quickly. And if anybody is watching the news, Oxnard was very fortunate to last 24 to 48 hours in that a storm that was slated for this area went south of us, nationally impacted Los Angeles and Orange County much more severely than it did us. And there's houses that have slid off of foundations. It's just been a terrible mess down there, so, you know, please be vigilant of your neighbors, especially during the storm period, and we shall get through this eventually, hopefully. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Consul Porell?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the speakers in the event tonight, and I'd also really, again, like to thank city staff for getting the Small Business Administration here. Recently, there was an event in Thousand Oaks where Clean Power Alliance, as a member, that was invited. There was a presentation of a check of $12 million, $800,000 is to go to the City of Oxnard for electrification units, charging units, and located throughout the area. Congressman Brownlee and the other, the other gentleman, Congressman Carverhal, thank you, thank you, Mr. Brownlee, were in attendance. There were some comments made that I think were a little confusing to me, but I think it would be wise to possibly get Kathleen Mallory, our energy person, to make a small presentation about what's going to happen, where this is going to take place, what we're going to get, what are the obligations. I would also like to thank the City of Oxnard staffs from Solid Waste and the Traffic Department. Three individuals showed up on a rainy night, city staff, at the Sea View Neighborhood for a crowd of 30 people that came out in the rain. It was a tremendous evening. And the Chair and that organization, tremendous organization. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Consul Valenswol?
Yes. On Wednesday, January 17th, I joined the City Manager and another city staff member, I believe Annie, at the Bryce Canyon Neighborhood Council meeting. I was lightly attended, but you know, we had some delicious lasagna made by Mr. John Hike. Sunday, January 21st, I actually took a personal visit out to downtown Riverside to check out the Cheech Marine exhibit, where I actually got to meet Cheech Marine himself, and I got to check out the downtown overall to see some of the work that our City Manager, Alex, when, did when he worked at the public agency for the city of Riverside out there, and seeing over the past eight years transform. It's a day and night between like 2016 and 2024. On Monday, January 22nd, I had the opportunity to join the California Faculty Association on their strike, and I guess fortunately, you know, it was a one, ended up being a one-day strike where the CSG system offered them a tentative agreement, so now we'll see how that plays out, you know, because we have plenty of CFA members who are also residents here in Oxnard, you know, potentially, who may have potentially not been getting paid while on strike, but you know, happy to see that was resolved. Later that day, afternoon, I actually took a tour of fire stations two and three and eight with our Fire Chief Hamilton, which I really appreciate all the information he shared with me, and really the need to modernize our fire stations two and three, you know, buildings that are 50-plus years old in our, in South Oxnard, and need an update for increase our public safety, and also the, like, the long conversation on needing to improve our EMS response times. On Tuesday, January 23rd, I was actually able to join our Mayor Protem, City Manager, with the SBA Loan Center and the South Oxnard Center. On Saturday, January 27th, I worked with some Redwood Neighborhood residents to clean up our alleyways on Teakwood between the cities of Oxnard and Port Wainimi. You know, we were able to do that successfully in less than three hours, and very thankful for the park staff to come and join us that day. On Tuesday, January 30th, had the opportunity to sit down with some of our firefighters, Ulysses, Grant, Cor, Dan, Danny, and Andrew, to discuss some of the issues that Fire Station One takes care of in Center of Oxnard, and you know, just hearing some of their concerns as city staff. Monday, February 5th, actually just yesterday, I took a tour of our Del Norte Recycling Facility, very impressed with the work that staff does there, sorting our waste and, you know, making sure that, you know, just keep you up to state mandates and codes for all the work. And actually, it's kind of a fun fact, because nine years ago, I actually had a Facebook memory come up where I posted where I got an A on a research paper at UCSB citing part of Oxnard reclaiming the recycling facility back in 2013, 2014, so I thought, that was pretty fun, funny to see that. Some of the things coming up, tomorrow, actually be meeting with some of the Port of Wainimi staff to discuss, you know, what their goals are and how they plan on expanding eastward into the city of Oxnard's sphere of influence. Thursday, there's a South Winds Neighborhood Council at 6:00 PM at Hickok School. On Monday, there's like a four-hour open house with the Interface Children and Family Services in their facility in Camar Rio, so I'll be looking forward to attending that. Next Monday, there's also a CalGisler Neighborhood Meeting at 6:00 PM at Elm Street. Yeah, and then next Monday after that, I will be joining park staff to take a look at our South Oxnard parts and some of our potential improvements. And actually, here's another thing, I actually joined a 5K fun run with the, for the Wainimi Beach for Community Benefit Fund with the Port of Wainimi and City of Port Wainimi, where, you know, hopefully I can do the 5K still, because I might peak, I was only going to do it in 19 minutes. I'll just be lucky if I can get it done this time. But yeah, and then also entering the words from some of our speakers, can we, I was looking forward to see if we could agendize, file and receive informational session or appointment session for the Clean Power Alliance on the REACH codes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I just want to thank, you know, our, our Police Chief and our Fire Chief and our City Manager for keeping us updated on this storm that we had. We were, as I mentioned, we were pretty lucky that we only had a couple of inches of rain compared to Los Angeles, Santa Barbara, and those folks, but thank again to the First Responder Chief Hamilton and Jason, thank you so much, and Mr. City Manager for keeping us up to speed. Thank you. Okay, our next item is Cultural and Community Service Department. Subject is appointment of two representatives to the Ventura County Area and Agency, Area and Agency Advisory Council. Recommendation, the City Council approved the recommendation from the Senior Services Commission to appoint two senior service commissioners to the Ventura County Area and Agency. Motion on this item?
Excuse me, Mayor Zargosa?
Any speakers on this item?
There's no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no discussion, I would move the recommended action.
Moved by Mayor Protem?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Consul Porell. Please vote.
And by the way, we're both senior citizens.
Senior? The two, are you two the ones that are appointed? Please vote.
Boy, walk into there.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is a review of the Information Consent item, agenda items, and we have one to six speak, excuse me, up to six items. We have one speaker here that might list. Jesus, is he available?
Yes, Mayor Zargosa, Jesus is available virtually.
Okay, let's go ahead and have Jesus before we go into the six items.
Jesus, please press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hello? Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Jesus Rojas for the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. I'm speaking on Agenda Item K6. We represent the rental housing providers throughout Ventura, Los Angeles, and San Bernardino Counties, including many in Oxnard. We are the local voice of the rental housing industry and have substantial concern in the new language that is being proposed and strongly urge that this language be further revised. We are not opposed to the entire ordinance or most of the new requirements contained in the proposed ordinance. However, the new language stating, quote, "A tenant is not required to vacate the residential real property on any day where a tenant can continue living in the residential real property without the violation of house, safety, and habitability legal requirements," is extremely problematic. This provision will most likely lead many renters to willfully jeopardize their own house and safety, create needless arguments between renters and owners, and cause substantial delays or prevent necessary substantial repairs and maintenance. As such, we strongly object to this specific sentence remaining in the proposed ordinance. It is simply unreasonable to expect renters to know and understand the details and nuances of house, safety, and habitability code language, and construction processes. As such, this provision will only encourage renters to put their own safety at risk without full understanding the dangers involved, the dangers involved such as potential exposure to unknown hazardous materials, excessive noise causing long-term hearing damage, potential forest, lack of consistent electricity causing food spoilage and possible food poisoning, lack of consistent heat, water, or bathroom facilities, et cetera. A construction zone is no place for a renter on any day during active construction. Rather than continuing to argue with renters to urge them to leave for their own safety or face substantial legal risk in allowing them to remain, many owners will simply opt not to conduct the needed substantial repairs and maintenance. As a result, they will eventually have to sell the property to a large corporation for demolition and replacement as new luxury units, providing a better return on investment to their new owners and their shareholders. This not only drives small mom and pops out of business-
Thirty seconds.
...but will also boost the already limited, the already limited supply of older rental housing, providing more affordable rents and lower-income families. We are asking for your help to maintain existing affordable rental housing in Oxnard by existing mom and pop owners by eliminating this one sentence from the ordinance before it moves forward. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, we have the items on this. Can you share before we go to Consul Turan?
Sure, if I can have Chief Assistant City Attorney Ken Rozell address the issues.
Ken, can, can you please clarify what the concerns are from this?
Yes, happy to address this issue. I'm rather surprised that the Department Association has, has raised these issues. The language in the ordinance which you adopted as an urgency ordinance and which you're, before you tonight- and which you're before you tonight to adopt is hundred percent consistent with the language that will go into effect as of April first, twenty twenty four. That's S B five sixty seven. In addition, the language uh that you adopted as part of your urgency ordinance, which is before you tonight, is consistent with the requirements of A B fourteen sixty seven. Uh, it does provide greater protection um than the underlying bill, which we're allowed to do. A number of other jurisdictions throughout California have adopted similar um language, and I want to emphasize again that the language in your ordinance is directly from uh S B five sixty seven, which goes into effect uh as of April first. So.
So Ken, regardless, it would have been gone to effect April one anyway.
Correct. It that will be the law of throughout the entire state. Um, so I I think the important point is, and I'm a little disappointed that he didn't explain why he's pushing this, the issue uh that was before the council while you adopted the interim ordinance uh was to uh ensure that before a property owner can evict a tenant for just cause, that there be a substantial remodel. Uh, he is proposing that tenants be ousted and which are more likely to trigger their loss of that unit and which would allow the the property owner to then raise the rent. So um I I think, you know, he's much less concerned about um the interest of the tenants, much more concerned about uh the the property owners.
The substantial remodeling is extremely important part of it.
Correct, that and that is.
That was left out.
Yeah, that is really the key issue that staff brought this to you before and which is what cause was was bringing before the council as well, that there needs to be a substantial remodel before tenants are evicted from uh their property and that the ordinance uh which you adopted as urgency measure and which your proposed uh adoption tonight would would codify those more robust regulations to ensure uh that there actually be substantial remodel before tenants are asked to to leave their home.
Councilman Turan.
Uh, thank you. I um was actually going to request that we on the info consent agenda pull K three and K six, but since we're on K six, I'll just real quickly thank um Mr. Rozell for those comments. I was uh going to hope that we would be able to make some kind of uh response to the emails we received as well as a comment tonight. So thank you for that. Um, I'll just add that uh, you know, I hope that the Apartment Association can look to give um renters a little bit more credit on uh things like this. Um, I I can't foresee many situations where a person will um hypothetically insist on staying in what could be a dangerous situation, um where there's construction happening or uh, you know, paint being sanded with potential lead in it and anything that, as the definition or as the sentence said, falls under a um health and safety code, certainly the person probably wouldn't want to be there anyways. But um as a renter myself, I can't imagine pushing so hard as I need to stay in my home while you're um tearing out drywall and taking things down to the studs. And so um, I appreciate the response, Mr. Rozell. Uh, again, I just, I hope that as we move forward with this and other jurisdictions look at this prior to April first, that we give a little bit more credit to the intelligence of folks who are renters. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ken, and thank you, Steve. Thank, okay, um, council members, any?
Mayor Zaragoza.
Any?
There are no addition, there are no additional speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Thank you, council members. What's the pleasure?
I'll move the recommended action.
Move recommendation by?
I had K three still.
Oh, I'm sorry, K three, okay. Go ahead to K three.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick thing for K three. So we have um uh an agreement for Landscape Architecture Services for Durley Park Improvement Project, and um I was just hoping that it looks like Mr. Howlett will be here. If we could just very briefly um let folks know what we're looking at for this, and this is part of the state grant that we received for Durley Park um improvements, correct?
Correct. Uh, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, this is in response to a grant from the state. So it's the State Park Development and Community Revitalization Program where the city was awarded uh seven point one million dollars rounded up, seven point uh zero nine. Anyway, uh, yes, so this is part of the revitalization of Durley Park and part of the scope of work is to realign the baseball fields, add lighting, security lighting, update with a walking track, new restroom, skate park, pump track, uh new basketball court, exercise stations, uh water conservation efforts in the landscapes, a new parking lot on the west side, and then the two water towers that are on the property will get a mural. So which what's before you uh tonight is for the um management design and uh uh the bidding phase and the construction phase management. That also includes the potential for charrettes to meet with the communities. So as we go through the design process of of this renovation of this park, that we can share it with the users of the facility, uh definitely the Sunset Little League and coordinate that with them. So that's also included in the scope of work for this project.
Great, thank you for that. And um I uh, you know, would be remiss if I didn't mention that, leading up to this, part of the application and the awarding of the grant um did have robust community outreach for folks who live around Durley Park to provide input on what they would like to see at the park, which led us to where we are today, correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you. And lastly, um, this is a, I don't want to get off the agenda item, but there's a reason the restrooms aren't listed here because that's a separate project that's already um in process. Is that correct?
There's two restrooms. So there is a restroom as part of this project, and then there is the Durley Park Fire that is uh out to bid right now for uh repairs.
Yes, that's what I meant. Just so folks know that that is a separate project from what we have in front of Sir Durley Park. Great. All right, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Howlett.
Steve, real quick, did I hear you also the removal of the tanks up there too?
No, not the removals, the painting of a mural on the tanks.
Okay, because those tanks have been there for forever. Okay, Councilman Perello?
Yes, just one question on this. The Landscape Architects Services, they could potentially make them plan. How long do the plans have before they become what's called stale? So if something were to come up, a situation in the future, we couldn't act on those plans. Is there, can planning staff help out? Like, how long do these plans become stale where then they'd have to come back and make a new plan? One year, two years?
I I believe Michael Wolf, our director, Michael Wolf is coming up, but this this agreement is for five years. We intend to use up this grant before it expires. So the funding is available. We don't foresee any reason why these funds would not be available moving forward. So as we design um as part of the scope of work of this, this is not only design, but this consultant will also go into the project management for out to bid and then the actual construction as well.
I believe that answers my questions. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we got a first.
Thank you.
Excuse me, a first by Councilman Perello. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Turan. Please vote. From one to six.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is L one. This is a report, City Treasurer, City Treasurer Quarterly Investment Report for the period ending December twenty nine, twenty twenty three. Recommendation, City Council receive and file this report, and there was a pre-recorded item per measure M, and we have Mr. Molina, if you have any questions. Any speakers on this item?
Mayor Zaragoza, there's no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Councilmember, what's the pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I have an additional presentation. I hope it's.
Well, can we do uh under measure M, uh can?
If the presiding officer allows it, yes.
Well, hold on, go ahead.
Uh, there's some material on the screen.
Uh, Mayor, before we want, has this been shared with the city clerk for the public? Because this, the agenda and the materials associated were released twelve days ago, so I just want to make sure that we're good on that.
That's right. So.
This presentation has not been shared with the public.
So I think that we.
Well, I thought that's the purpose of this. We've had other times when people come forward with a presentation, but you asked for an update, you asked for additional information, and that's what I wanted to provide.
Well, you had an opportunity to share this information under pre-recorded, per measure M. Mr. City Attorney, what, where do we stand on this item? If the public doesn't attend this?
If it hasn't been made available to the public and if the council doesn't wish to receive it, you can receive and file the presentation, which is all that the statute requires.
We can receive and file. How long is the presentation?
It'll probably be all of two or three minutes.
Go ahead then.
If that. And then Councilman Turan has requested in the past to have additional updated information.
Now, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, if if the I T people. So you've all been provided the financial information. Um, in that information, we identified that the total amount that we have invested is four hundred and thirty seven million, two hundred and sixty two thousand, five hundred and eighty six dollars. But what I'd like to have, and I don't know if someone has a clicker there, uh, we have seventy five million dollars, which is a large chunk of that, uh, invested in Leif. And what I wanted to do is to show you, oh, I guess it doesn't work, um, that, no, go.
There you go.
Go back. There you go. That as of December, Leif has increased their rate to three point nine. Not too long ago, it was at two point seven. So as you can see, we've had some good increases in the rates at the um amount that we have invested with Leif. The next one, please. And I apologize if I sneeve, sneeze. I'm uh not doing too well. So the next one, if you would. So I wanted to show you the uh the amount of our investments that are being held by U S Bank. Remember, we buy the instruments, but we have a third party bank, U S Bank, actually hold those instruments, and they make sure that before our money is released to the brokers, that they have in fact received the investments. And when we're investing between one million and sometimes ten million dollars at a time, it's important to make sure that we have a bank that that's receiving it and responsible for making sure that the transaction is done correctly. So in the investments that are reported through U S Bank, forty three million are in corporate issues, and we have the balance, two hundred and seventy million are in U S government issues. And the reason for U S government G S E is the um virtually the security. Uh, those more recently have gone up to five point nine. There was one out about uh three weeks ago at six point oh seven, and we picked that one up. Unfortunately, they called it back three, three weeks later. So um because as the rates move up and down, they'll have a call provision. Next one, please. So what we have are the amounts of the investments. We saw that uh with U S Bank, we have a total of three hundred and sixteen million, ten thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars. And as I mentioned, we have seventy five million with Leif, and we have thirty one million with the Ventura County Investment Pool for the total of four hundred and twenty two million, ten thousand, two hundred and seventy two dollars and fifty cents. And these are market value as opposed to cost. Next, please. So um, if you would like additional information, I think, excuse me, I sent members of the Investment Committee that are on the council recently a list of all the investments that we have and hold and uh asked for your review. If you have any concerns or questions or would suggest I move into some other types of investments, please let me know. With that, um, I think we're pretty well done. Um, we are estimating that um we will, as of, this interesting, as of December twenty ninth, our estimate uh for total annual interest earnings will be eleven million, four hundred and thirty six thousand, nine hundred and sixty seven. But as of today, uh reviewing the interest rates and what's happening, we may be able to clear fourteen million in an estimate for the next fiscal year. But I do need some information with the finance director in terms of the projected cash flows for major projects. The normal operations I can handle, but I don't know what those large C I P projects are due and when they're going to have payments due, and that obviously will diminish the amount of money that's available to invest. So with that, I'm open to any questions you may have, and thank you for letting me make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Any additional questions? If not, thank you so much. You know, this is a receive and file. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the Finance Department. This is a subject is fiscal year twenty three, twenty four budget mid-year review. Recommendation that City Council would receive an update on the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four revenue and expenditure projections for major funds and to approve the budget amendments within the Gulf Development Impact Fees Contribution, Trust and Facility Maintenance, and also related funds as explained in this report. Um, I I have a, Mr. Javier, you know, the CFO, I have a a question. Can you give us a brief explanation on on the revenues and expenditures for the mid-year and how potentially they're going to affect us here for for June thirtieth, coming into the new uh July one fiscal year uh as as we progress? Can give us a brief, I know there was an a a recording, but just give us a brief explanation on the on the revenues and expenditures and the effect it's going to have on the coming fiscal year.
Well, thank you for the question and good evening, uh, Mayor and council members. Uh, what we, as we explain in the report, what we're doing in this uh in this mid-year review, we're looking at what the uh the the budget has uh it was adopted and what have changed in the budget in the in the year because the city council has taken some actions that are being increasing the budget. We have also uh as part of the the year-end process, basically, all we do are a big carryover for capital projects that haven't been, that were budgeted in the prior year, and they were funded, but were not completely executed. And there's a portion of that that is also carried forward for the this fiscal year.
So the expenditures we have, what, about twenty million dollars carryover?
And and the general fund is approximately that amount. So uh as as part of that process, what we also do is we reach out to the different departments, and we ask them for to help us to evaluate if uh something in the on the revenue side are going to be similar or there's significant changes in what we have in in the budget. And the same thing with expenses. In addition to this carryover that I was explaining for for capital projects, we also ask the departments if there's any significant uh uh professional uh services that are going to be different than what we have in the budget to help us to come up with these uh estimates that we have for um uh for the for the end of the fiscal year. What we're seeing is that some revenues are going a little bit uh higher than we have in the budget in in terms of uh sales tax, but some other expenses where we include the carryover are also going to be a little bit higher, and they're being offsetted for some some others. But overall, the with the the funds are are doing okay, as we're expecting. There's some uh projects that are being funded with carryover, and with some funds that especially the Environmental Resources Fund, um is something that we are keeping a close eye on on that fund because of the 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 projects that they have and and currently with the current uh evaluation of uh future uh rates for that.
And Javier, on the Bradley Burns uh taxes, how are we doing with measure E? Me, you know, measure E, I think I looked at what, about a three hundred thousand dollar?
Yeah. O- overall, sales taxes for for the city have, uh, they are benefiting from the uh the establishment of the Amazon Fulfillment Center in the city. So uh that is helping the overall sales tax of uh to be uh performing better than our neighborhood and communities.
And I know I mentioned the Bradley Burns, and that's the one point two five that the state collects, and then we get, the county gets one percent, and then we, it's distributed to the other parts to the cities and so forth. So we're we're doing kind of okay with that.
Yes, the the city is doing is doing okay with that.
Councilmembers, any questions on?
Mayor Zaragoza, there is one virtual speaker on this item.
Okay.
Manuel Herrera, please press star six to unmute and you have three minutes.
Hello?
Go ahead, Manuel.
Yes, um, thank you. So in in watching the video on YouTube earlier today uh regarding this item, um, I know it's just an update, and I know it had to do because of, you know, unexpected expenditures and so forth, but but in in watching the video, it it prompted some questions that I had. So I thought they went better to to ask about it than than now, right, during the council meeting. So my question is, um, you know, with all this litigation with Aaron Starr, that's obviously costing the taxpayers of Oxnard millions of dollars. So my question is, how does that impact the budget? And because we never know when we're going to be sued by him. So, you know, how do you plan for that? And and where does the money come from? Like, what category, what bucket does that come from? The general fund or, you know, where to, can you explain to the people how this works? And and also, and more importantly, if I. And, and also, and more importantly, if I can get an answer tonight of how much so far has Aaron Starr cost the citizens of Oxnard? I, I know it's in the millions, so, and, and if you don't have an exact figure, can you give us an estimate on how much this has impacted the citizens of Oxnard, and how much this has impacted the budget? And, and if you're not able to give me the information, how do I get that information? Do I have to do a public records request, or how would that work? So those are my questions.
Thank you. That's a good question, Matty. But Mr. City Manager, will that, or City Manager explain that?
Sure. So without getting into the weeds on this at this point, I mean, the short answer to how do the various Starr lawsuits impact the budget, the short answer is, it sucks. I don't know how, but, well, actually, I do have better ways I can phrase that, but I can't here. But, but the bottom line is this. So there, there are a couple of parts to, to Mr. Herrera's question. So let me get the broad one, which is, specific to the bonding litigation, while we, while we have won at the Superior Court level, he's going to appeal. It always appeals. It's okay. That's part of our system, and everyone has their, their rights to do so. But the opportunity costs for us to have gotten a couple of years ago municipal bonds at absurdly, historically low interest rates, that's gone now. So not only could we not access that money, which is the way all governments access money for long-term and large capital projects, we couldn't get that money at that historically low price, so we couldn't perform much of that work. And with regard to the street repair, we've had to re-divert cash that we have that normally would go to other services and programs for our community, because thanks to our Public Works Director's insistence and leadership, we have to keep up with the road maintenance, otherwise it'll cost us even more down the road. As, as behind as we are now, we can't allow for it to get even worse. So there's a huge impact to the city's budget, and, and we're, and we're talking tens of millions here, not just several million, tens of millions. And, and the, the ripple effect of the quality-of-life programs and services that we now cannot do. So that's a larger conversation we'll probably have to have during the budget. Now, in terms of the litigation costs, I'm sure that hasn't been, been cheap, and we can, at some point, we can get an updated tally on that. But that's not, you know, that, that's, that's always something that can happen to us in terms of litigation, so I don't want to, I don't want to get too much, too excited over that, as much as the, the deep concern I have about the overall impact that it has, the negative impact that it has on the community at large. Thank you.
And basically, Mr. City Manager's impacting the, the general fund. The general fund, as you mentioned before, you know, we're paying cash as opposed to leasing, and I've always kind of compared that to a mortgage, here we're going to buy a house, and instead of buying a mortgage, we have to pay cash for a house, and we don't have that kind of money.
That's right.
Thank you. Councilman Perillo?
I appreciate the, Mr. Herrera's question. My initial question was, if we could have the CFO please introduce the other two individuals at the table, who do a tremendous amount of work in helping us. But before he says that, I appreciate that we've had the mayor ask some questions, how, you know, if he could give us an update, because the previous speaker, our city treasurer, made a comment, and I, I don't want to take words away or steal the thunder from any other council member, but Mr. Turan has never asked for a special public showing, which was the implication Mr. Molina said. Mr. Peran, Mr. Turan, has asked for a simple additional explanation, just as the mayor did tonight.
Similar to him.
And there was never any special thing, which, as the clerk is informed, this, the public has never seen, which, according to Mr. Starr and his supporters, the treasurer being one, Measure M has required that. So I just wanted to say that. But if you could introduce, because I, I know I've only seen them a couple of times, and I know there's tremendous work for you, and, and I apologize for taking too much time there.
Thank you, Councilmember Perillo, and I apologize for not introducing my, my two team members here. I have Tanya Williams, who's our Budget Manager, and Mark Sowell, who's our Assistant CFO.
Thank you very much for your work.
There we go. I was gonna say, now that you've done that, we have to get the camera on them and look at them. Smile.
And, and by the way, Javier, Mark, you made a very good presentation, too, on the mid-year budget. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is.
Mayor Zaragoza?
Any additional speakers?
We have no additional speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Thank you so much.
There is an action item, so I would move the recommended action.
So move by Mayor Protam?
Second.
Second by Valen Shola. Please vote. Thank you, Javier. Mark and.
Motion carries seven-two-zero.
Thank you. Our next item is a, a Public Works item. Public Works Project Three-Two-Four-Zero-Zero-Three-Five-Two with Toro Enterprises Incorporated for Citywide Alley Resurfacing Fremont North Neighborhood Alley Restoration Project PW Twenty-four-Eleven. Recommendation the City Council approved and authorized, one, a total of four million five-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars in project funds from the Citywide Alley Resurfacing Fremont Neighborhood Alley Restoration Project, specification number PW Twenty-four-Eleven. Two, that the, the mayor executed an agreement with Toro Enterprises Incorporated for the amount of three-hundred-and-eighty, eighty, three-hundred, excuse me, three-million-eight-hundred-ninety-one-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven for the project. And three, the project contingency amount of three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-four, ten percent for Toro Enterprises Incorporated, for a total not to exceed the value amount of four-million-two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-and-twenty-one for the project. Four, a project allocation amount of three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-seven, eight percent for engineering inspection and survey and, and project management. And five, a project budget appropriation transfer in a total amount of four-million-five-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-eight from the twelve Alleyway Project, number C-two-one-one-one, to Citywide Alley Resurfacing Project, number C-two-one-oh-two, within the General Fund One-O-One, for a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-eight, and, and the Measure O Fund, One-O-four, for four-million-four-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand. This item did not originate in committee, and this is a capital improvement projects specifically listed in the Citywide Capital Improvement Program Budget, which was previously approved by the City Council, and this was a pre-recorded item per Measure M. And we have Mr. Wolf for the additional questions. Any questions, but Councilman Perillo?
Yes. And Mr. Wolf, thank you very much. And I want to thank you, as the City Manager's identified, because of you, we're sticking with working on the streets, because if we don't stick on working with the streets, the cost will get great, much, much greater. But thank you for that. My question for, on this particular item, we do need the works on the alleys, we do need this, these improvements. What, for residents throughout the city of Oxnard, when a certain neighborhood is, is determined to have work on an alley, how is that neighborhood prioritized? How do they rank them? And some explanation, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members, Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works. I wish we had money to do all of our paving that we need throughout the city, so it's a very tough process to only select a few. Part of that process, or most of that process, is done through data analysis. We want to make sure that we are expending the funds in the right amount, in terms of prioritizing not only corrective maintenance but preventative maintenance, and I've talked about this before, for chasing the worst streets, whenever we're going to catch up. And so the way we typically do this is we do it by several categories. We look at the pavement condition index, which is a, a rating of the, of the actual existing pavement. That's typically one of our highest-weighted criteria that we use. But we also look at, especially for alleys, and especially if we're going to be doing concrete alleys instead of asphalt alleys, we want to make sure that the utilities, or any utilities that may be in that alleyway, actually are upgraded or otherwise have a longer lifespan, so that we're not back in there and digging that back up. We also look at things like average daily traffic, so the volume of vehicles that go on a street. The idea there is to have the, again, the biggest bang for your buck, in terms of the number of, of drivers that may be using that, that portion. But also goes into density. Want to make sure that we're looking at the density around that, those alleys or those street segments. Another one that we've added recently, that I've had conversations with our engineering team, is taking a look at our street maintenance and where we're doing our pothole repairs. So the idea here is we're, if we're often going out there doing pothole repairs, this should be a, a street segment that starts to rise to the top, because if we're able to address that through corrective maintenance or preventative maintenance through a capital project, that allows that team to go do other things, that allows them to go do other potholes or allow them to go do other improvements. And so that's how we kind of prioritize. And then obviously, we look at different areas of the city. We don't want to concentrate on one area of the city, and so there's, there's, those are some of the criteria that we use to do that.
Thank you very much, and it took a little line, but thank you for the explanation. Anybody that's lived in Oxnard twenty years, thirty years, they can remember, long ago, it was not uncommon there would be a street paved, and within a year, the street was cut up to replace a line. And I appreciate that that's one of the criteria, that you make sure it doesn't happen again. Thank you very much. And appreciate, in my neighborhood, I've been able to drive around, there are a couple of potholes that have come to the surface, but there's been a lot of rain. The city is doing a heck of a job taking care of our street, and Public Works is the big chunk of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for, for Councilmember Turan?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. So just some quick items for this agenda item in front of us. For Fremont North Neighborhood, which those who may be unaware, does fall into District Two. It's bordered by H Street on the east and Ventura Road on the west, Gonzales at the north, and Doris Avenue in the south. And folks who know where Fremont Middle School is, or Fremont Academy as it's known now, it's, well, it's right in the middle of that neighborhood, along with a number of multi-unit housing dwellings, a lot of apartments, some single-family homes, a good mix of those. But, you know, looking at the map that was provided in the staff report, you know, we have the alleys, you know, marked that are going to be redone. Would you mind sharing just briefly, Mr. Wolf, you had mentioned, or alluded to it right now, some of these alleys are going to be, or most of these are going to be in concrete, I think one is going to be in asphalt. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And can you share with us, I know we've talked about it in the past on, through this council, but, you know, why would we do an alley in concrete instead of asphalt?
It's a very complex question. I'll try to simplify the answer to that one. So when we have large vehicles like trash trucks, things like that, that may be accessing some of these smaller alleyways, the original design of some of those alleyways were, were very minimal in terms of their structural segment. And when I say structural segment, I'm talking about the asphalt, the base material, and the subgrade. And so part of what we're, what was proposed before I got here, and I, I agreed with it when I got here to the city, is to take a look at those, especially ones that may not need any utility work going forward, or very limited utility work going forward, instead of trying to replace that with an asphalt structural section where, let's say, for example, and you, I think I shared with you a geotechnical report, that said that the original design was three inches of asphalt over basically zero base. So to replace that from an asphalt structural section, you would have to dig down into the base quite a bit, and be pulling out all this material to get a structural section that's going to last a long time. With PCC or, or, or concrete, you can give an equivalent structural load that's equivalent to a very thick, a much thicker asphalt section in a much thinner process. And so it actually allows us to do work more efficiently, that the, the Portland cement or the concrete's actually more expensive, but it, it lasts longer. So there's all kinds of reasons why we would do it in, in Portland cement rather than, than asphalt. And that's, that's probably the biggest reason, is to try to make sure that we get something that lasts a long time, and try to fit within that old design criteria.
Great. Thank you for that. And the, the one alley that is going to be in asphalt, I, as I understand, I did have a question come in about this from a member of the public. This particular alley runs the length of the shopping center where Grocery Outlet and Riot ADR and Paralos, M Street. And it sounds like this alley, its substructure, I think you mentioned, is in better condition, right, and actually lends itself to asphalt versus going concrete, correct?
Right. So part of it that we want to do is stretch the dollars as far as we can, so we don't want to overspend on something that we don't need to. So when we looked at the geotechnical report, our design engineer, again, I'm trying not to get too technical, but we have certain values that we use to do calculations of thicknesses of, of asphalt. One of the values we use is California R-value. When, when you have a very high R-value and a lot of base and subbase, putting back an asphalt cap is much more effective and efficient in terms of spending dollars, and you get quite a bit of lifespan out of that, because you still have a really good structural segment below the asphalt. So in those scenarios, we don't want to have to dig out a whole bunch of really good material that's useful for us, that's already been paid for and installed, to put in concrete. And so in those situations, to make sure that we stretch the dollars, we would make the determination that that would be an asphalt cap. We would remove the, the top portion of that asphalt that has some of the, I call them superficial, but maybe surface-related distresses, and not any subgrade or subbase distresses, and then put back the same amount of asphalt back.
And that would be rated to uphold the delivery traffic and larger vehicles that typically go through that alley versus the residential alleys?
That's correct. So you can imagine that, obviously, that when you're sort of building that cake of subbase, subgrade, subbase and asphalt, the thicker that is, the more it can, the more load it can take, right? And so when you looked at our geotechnical reports, and we, we took samples, you can see that the, that original design was much thicker, in the thirteen to fifteen or eighteen inches, versus some places that was only three inches in terms of thickness. So it was already designed to take that heavy load.
Great. Thank you. And I appreciate you trying not to keep it too technical. I love soaking all this stuff up, and that's just me. I know that folks want kind of the, the bare basics on it. Last thing is, I'll just share that this particular neighborhood, Fremont North, if my dates are correct in my head, in two thousand and twenty, they had their iron pipes replaced for water. In two thousand and twenty-one, or twenty-two, they had their streets repaved after that, and now we're looking at their alleys, and this is going to be one of the neighborhoods that actually has, is now up to speed as far as all of its undergrounding goes for piping. Utility should have been done prior to the paving, and then we had paving, and now we have asphalt resurfacing. And so I just want to thank Public Works for years-long effort in this particular neighborhood, and I know that there are many other neighborhoods that are falling under this. I know Kamala has a lot of work done this past summer, and we're going to look toward additional neighborhoods on this. And lastly, I will say, if you look at a map of the alleys that have been repaved in the city, I, I appreciate Public Works' effort on looking at an equitable way to approach that, and seeing where the most need was, as you described earlier, Mr. Wolf, and there's a really good mix of essentially South Oxnard and North Oxnard alleys that are receiving this treatment. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any, any additional speakers on this item?
Mayor Zaragoza, there's no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion.
Move the recommended action? Second.
Okay, first by Councilmember Turan, second by Valen Shola. Please vote.
Motion carries seven-two-zero.
Thank you. Our next item is Public Works, number four. Subject is Gulf Management Agreement. Recommendation the City Council authorized us to enter into negotiations with American Gulf Corporation for a new agreement to manage the River Ridge Golf Course Operations.
I thought you were.
The Public Works and Transportation Committee was scheduled to consider this item on Jan. nine, twenty-twenty-four. The meeting was canceled, and this item ended up being brought directly to the council for action due to that time constraints. And if, again, this is a pre-recorded item, and we do have, do we have any speakers on this item?
Mayor Zaragoza, we have one virtual speaker from Manuel Herrera.
Okay.
Manuel, please press star six to unmute. Manuel, please press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hello, it's Manuel Herrera again. I guess I'm on a roll tonight. Now, I just wanted to to see if Mr. Wolf can elaborate just a little bit more when it comes to Mr. Tehran's question on whether it's the alleys will be paved with cement or asphalt.
We already.
He said it was going to be, he said it was going to be cement.
Manny, you were reading your popcorn. We already approved that item.
Oh, you approved it, right. Okay. No, you know what, I I was.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, I mean, I'm sorry, I was, I was on hold, and then the phone got disconnected, so I had to call back. But but, okay.
Okay, what what was a quick question to, or or you can call Mr. Wolf, 385.
Okay.
Eight zero five, call him tomorrow.
I will, I will call him tomorrow.
Okay, any other speakers on that?
Mayor Zaragoza, there's no additional speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Okay, any questions of Steve on this item?
I'll move the recommended action if there's no questions.
Moved by Bert Perello.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Madrigal. Please vote.
Motion carries seven to zero. Oh, I'm sorry. I have a, I have a no by Councilmember Tehran. So motion carries six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, Public Works Department, First Amendment to Trade Service Agreement 3230037, 370 with RA Atmore &amp; Sons Incorporated for citywide on-call abatement services. Recommendation, the City Council approved and authorized the mayor to execute a First Amendment to Trade Service Agreement with RA Atmore &amp; Sons Incorporated to increase, not to exceed, from 200,000 to 100, 1,400,000 through June 30, 2025, for citywide on-call abatement services. The Public Works Transportation Committee was scheduled to consider this item on Jan. 9, 2024. The meeting was canceled, and the item was being brought directly to the City Council for action due to time constraints. And this is a pre recorded per Measure M. And we have Mr. Wolf. If any questions? If not, we need a motion, this item.
Mayor Zaragoza.
Any speakers?
We have no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
There's no discussion. I would move the recommended action.
First by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Suwa. Please vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, item six, Community Development Department, on-call consulting services for community development. Recommendation, the City Council, one, approve and authorize execution of a Second Amendment to agreement with Ringcon Consultants Incorporated for on-call contract planning services, increasing the agreement amount by 500,000 for a total not to exceed 1,750,000. Two, and approve and authorize an execution of First Amendment to the agreement of CSG Consultants Incorporated for on-call contract planning services, increasing the agreement amount by 250,000 for total amount agreement of 500,000. The Community Service, Public Service Housing Development Committee was scheduled to consider this item on 1, 9, 2024, and the meeting was canceled. The item is being brought directly to the City Council due to time constraints. And with this is a pre recorded item, Measure M. Councilmembers, much pleasure.
Mayor Zaragoza.
Any any speakers?
There is no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Okay, we need a first.
I'll move, move this recommended action.
First by Tehran, second by Councilmember Suwa. Please vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, our last item, Housing Department. Subject, accessibility remodel project at Colonial site. Recommendation, that the Board of Commissioners of Housing Authority of the City Council of Oxnard, one, approve and authorize the housing director to execute a firm fixed price contract in the amount of $2,418,020 to MDJ Management Agreement Number A 84, 85, 44, using funds from the Housing Authority of City of Oxnard Business Activity Fund, properties located at 1040, 1070C, 1100B, 1130E, Colonial Road. Two, and authorize the housing director to execute a work order, orders for work to be performed. This item did not originate in committee. This project was included in the Housing Authority, a City of Oxnard Capital Fund Program Five Year Action Plan, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority for the City of Oxnard on April 6, 2021. And that was a pre recorded item per Measure M. And we do have Mr. Emilio. The mayor is for any questions?
Any speakers?
Any speakers?
Mayor Zaragoza, there's no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Perello, followed by Commissioner Tehran.
Good evening. Just one question. If there is going to be major work done in these units to bring our our inventory up to speed with requirements for the law, will there be any requirements to evict individuals and departments?
No, they're, the units are not occupied. That's why we're phasing them in the way that we're phasing them.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tehran.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Emilio. I'm wondering if you can just give a quick synopsis on this item and why we're now looking at the item in front of us about doing these remodels for accessibility at these particular units.
Thank you, Councilman Emilio Ramírez, Housing Director. You may recognize this type of item before you, this, not this item, but a similar form has been before you in the past. We are in the midst of converting existing public housing units into accessible public housing units, sorry, the accessible public housing units. We have to do that because we lost some of accessible public housing units in the disposition of Las Cortes, the Colonial Village. So we are in the process of converting our existing stock into this. And so that's why you're seeing multiple items come before you over the course of time. So this is a continuation of that effort.
Thank you. And as you mentioned, they're not currently occupied, and we're doing the work now as.
We would have to relocate them, obviously. But, I mean, thankfully, we have the ability to manage it, given that we have quite a few of these projects to undertake.
Okay, thank you.
Then it's part of the five year action plan, too.
It it is part of the five year capital fund plan.
Capital fund, right.
For the housing.
Action plan. Okay, so motion.
Move the recommended action. Second.
Okay, first by Valenzuela. Who's second? Andrade? Or or Tehran? Tehran, I'm sorry. Okay. Please vote, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's our last one.
Thank you. Motion carries eight to zero.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.